To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you can be seated. And we will open our commission meeting with an exciting moment as we begin the swearing in of Dr. Samuel Simmons. And so we'll have our city clerk, Kelly, take the coos, take this over for us at this point, and she will walk the family through the process because we'll also want to grab some pictures. So, Dr. Simmons, can you come forward?
I'll read through the oath completely, Dr. Simmons, and you'll respond affirmatively afterwards if you'll raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you're a citizen of the United States and of the state of Florida and of the city of Lakeland, and have all the qualifications as required by the charter for the office upon which you are now about to enter? That you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Florida and the ordinances of the city of Lakeland? And that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office upon which you are now about to enter, so help you, God. Congratulations.
Welcome. And let's go back here, right up here, and then on either side. Is there one with me and one without? You get to sit where you can help us control our finance director.
That sounds great.
Well, next, we are going to have a presentation from Lakeland Regional Health. We get this update regularly, and it is so important to hear from Daniel Drummond, who is the president's CEO, and then we can respond with any questions that you may have as a commission.
Well, good morning. Thank you so much for the opportunity to get to share a little bit about the progress at Lakeland Regional Health on a number of exciting initiatives. So, starting out, we'll kind of take a look back before we take a glimpse into the future. But, you know, we've really had the privilege of providing healthcare services in this community for well over 100 years. We've shared here on this slide some examples of where we began back in 1916 at Morel Memorial Hospital, when we had just 65 beds and 24 employees. So, amazing to think that today we're close to 900 beds and over 6,000 employees. I mean, you can see the progress along the way. Not only have we expanded our main campus, but we've also grown out in our off-site locations. Noticeably, the Hollis Cancer Center opening in 2003, and also our Grasslands Campus in 2016. We also will give some updates on how things are progressing with the Carol Jenkins Barnett Pavilion for Women and Children, which amazingly has been open for over four years now. And then, of course, we're just thrilled to have recently opened the doors for the Harold Family Center for Behavioral Wellness on our campus, and I will certainly be giving an update on that, too. So, looking ahead, obviously, we've had a lot of progress over the past 100 years. We also realize that our community is growing, the healthcare needs are growing with it, and we want to make sure that we are continuing to grow and expand the services that we provide and the locations to make sure that we can continue to offer convenient access for those that are seeking services. Some of those that are under construction right now include our I-4 and Kathleen site. If you've passed by that exit on I-4, you can see that that building is really beginning to take shape. We have a topping-off ceremony planned for later this year to celebrate that, seeing that our groundbreaking was rained out, unfortunately. And then, on the south side of town, as we continue to see that population grow and the need for services growing along with it, we do have two sites that are currently under just very early conceptual planning, one along South Florida Avenue and one along 98 Bartow Road, just south of 540A. So, just a little bit about us, again, I know some of this may be familiar to you, but just as a reminder of kind of the size and services that we do provide, as the fifth largest hospital in Florida, we are currently licensed for 864 beds. That number will be going up by 28 as we complete the increase in licensed beds with the opening of our Behavioral Wellness Center. Ninety percent of our patients do come from Polk County. The other patients that generally come to us from outside the county are on the eastern side of Hillsborough, and we recently opened a practice in Plant City to better serve that population, which I'll touch upon in a few slides. We do have one of the busiest emergency departments in the country. The most recent ranking listed us as number two. We have close to 200,000 visits on an annual basis. We're the only trauma center in the county, and also, I think, the high volume that we see really speaks to the need for additional services in our community, which, again, is supported by not only our growth plans, but also our investment in graduate medical education that I'll be talking about towards the end of the presentation as well. Some of the key service lines and developments that I wanted to touch upon included the Banish Institute for Advanced Rehabilitation Medicine. Again, this is a 32-bed unit that is within our main hospital facility. It opened back in 2015 and has been very well-received and is quite busy and provides just excellent care in the rehabilitation space for patients that come through our doors. We also have the Carol Jenkins Barnett Pavilion that I touched upon. Again, this is the only Level III NICU in the area, the only dedicated children's emergency department and pediatric surgical program, and we also have a center for fetal care for those high-risk moms that are seeking prenatal care in the community and very happy to provide that service as well. Just one statistic to share with you, before the pavilion opened back in 2018, we delivered just under 3,000 babies on an annual basis. With the opening of the pavilion and all these additional services that we've been able to provide, we expect to exceed 4,000 births this year at Lakeland Regional, so just a tremendous amount of growth that we've seen over the past four years. Some of our other key service lines, I touched upon the Hollis Cancer Center that opened back in 2003, and again, that is really, you know, just a blessing for the community staffed by high-qualified oncologists that care for patients that need us during that very difficult cancer journey. We're also very proud of the work of the Harold Family Institute for Advanced Cardiovascular Medicine. You can see some of the noticeable distinctions here with our chest pain center, some advancements in technology such as the Watchman device that really allows patients to not need to be on blood thinners for the rest of their life by having this particular device implanted, and then also offering hybrid cath lab services for the county. None of these things would be possible, though, without our team. Again, I mentioned that we have over 6,000 team members, we're the second-largest employer in Polk County, and we know right now that we find ourselves in a challenging environment, not just in healthcare, but in general, with making sure that we can continue to support so that we can retain and recruit team members into our environment. Because, as we say, we know we can have all of the best buildings and technology, but at the end of the day, we are in the people business, and we need to make sure that we support our amazing team so that we can continue to provide excellent healthcare services to this community. Our medical staff has continued to grow as well. We have over 700 physicians that practice at Lakeland Regional Health, and of that, just over 270 are employed within the Lakeland Regional Health Physician Group. So, a little bit about the more recent developments on our campus, it's been just over two weeks since we opened the doors and welcomed the first patients to the Harold Family Center for Behavioral Wellness. This is so needed in our community. We all know that there is lack of access to behavioral health services nationally and locally. If you look at it on a national basis, the most recent statistics have indicated that one in five adults struggles with some form of behavioral health condition, yet only one in three of them will seek help or treatment for that condition. So, we want to be part of the solution, and that's not just expanding the capacity, which I note on this slide, but also making sure that we do our part to try and increase the conversation, to reduce the stigma so that patients feel comfortable seeking that help and support that they may need along their journey. Just a little bit about this building in particular, it has 96 inpatient beds. That's an increase from the 68 beds that we had previously. We are serving the vast majority of inpatient needs in this community. But I think what's even more important than the increase to the inpatient capacity is the fact that we're able to grow and expand outpatient services under the same roof within this facility, because what we see today is when there's a lack of access to outpatient services, then oftentimes, patients might not seek that help that they need, and that may result in them requiring inpatient stay for something that could have been treated in an outpatient environment. So, we really think that this is going to be transformational. We're obviously very appreciative of the Harold Family's support from our fundraising perspective and numerous other donors in the community that has made this a reality, because unfortunately, behavioral health services are not well-reimbursed. The regulatory requirements cause it to be a very costly service to provide, so this is really something that I commend our board of directors for investing in, because it is not something that is financially viable for us by itself, and we really do require the support from the fundraising perspective to make it a service that we can provide here locally. A little bit about our additional expansion plans, and again, this is really looking outside the four walls of the main hospital campus, and that's within our Lakeland Regional Health Physician Group. So, you can see on this map that we have a number of locations, not only in the Lakeland area, but, as I mentioned, we opened the doors to a facility in Plant City last year. We also have a new site of service down in Lake Wales with a primary care practice there, and then also continuing to serve the eastern side of the county with practice locations in both Auburndale and Winter Haven. So, this really allows us to be able to serve those in our community. This past month, we had 30,000 visits in our Lakeland Regional Health Physician Practice sites alone, so that's just, again, been a tremendous growth area for us and where we're looking to continue to expand. We're up to over 40 specialties, too, so in addition to primary care, have pretty much every specialty that you could need, both in the outpatient environment, but also, importantly, to make sure that we can support our very busy medical center and emergency department. Couple highlights in the physician group, if anyone has happened to be within our practice, we have recently converted to a new electronic medical record called Epic. And what excites me the most about this is that it really allows for that patient and provider interaction to happen a lot more seamlessly, not a lot of needing to wait on phones to talk to somebody, but rather, you can have that communication with your provider through an app on your phone. It's also available on different forums, as is shown on this slide. You can schedule appointments, pay your bill, really be able to do all of this very seamlessly, and we think that this is really going to allow us to continue to advance and demonstrate our commitment to a technology in the physician practice space. And we're not able to do all this work alone, so as a large, independent, non-for-profit health system, we know that for those services where we have a partner that allows us to continue to provide excellent care, we're going to establish that relationship and work collaboratively to make sure that we are meeting the healthcare needs of our community. So, you can see on this slide just an example of some of the various relationships that we have in different aspects of the work that we do to make sure that we can continue to grow and advance and provide the highest-quality healthcare services locally. And then, if you recall, it was this time last year when I came to this meeting to share that we were officially moving forward with our plans to become a teaching hospital and have our graduate medical education program launching in July of 2023. We are still very much on track for this and very excited about what it's going to bring to our community. You can see here the planned residencies that we have. I'm happy to share that seven of the eight have been accredited, and we are currently recruiting for residents within those various specialties, again, that will be starting next summer. Over our five-year cap building window, which is really the timeframe in which we have from the day the first resident arrives until we kind of set the number of residents that will be training, we plan to grow that to close to 200 residents. Year one will be closer to 75 that will be here, and then we'll grow. Some of these residencies are three years, some are four years, some are five years, so the amount of time that a given resident will be with us will vary. And while a lot of the details around kind of the logistics of what's to come on our milestones is on this slide, I like to kind of reset and just say, okay, why are we investing in graduate medical education? Why is it important for Lakeland Regional Health to be involved in teaching residents? And there's really four main reasons that I point to. The first is, we believe we're the largest hospital in the country that doesn't teach residents, so we don't feel we're doing our part by not opening our doors to the next generation of physicians and sharing that rich environment that I just described to those individuals. The second is, we know the best hospitals in the country are teaching hospitals, so if you open up any ranking of the best hospitals, they are those that are invested in academics and research, and we really feel it will allow us to continue on our journey of quality improvement. The third is access. So, I mentioned before that one of the reasons we have such a busy emergency department is there are patients that come to us for that level of care that could be cared for in a lower-cost environment, but oftentimes, it goes back to access, the number of providers that we have here, which we know is behind where we need to be, and also could be financially driven. So, oftentimes, patients might be uninsured or underinsured, and that's a barrier to access. So, these residents will be able to see patients during their training in an outpatient environment that will help to address that. And then, the fourth and final reason is, we're really hopeful that when they finish their time with us in training, that they'll want to stay in this community. Studies show that about 60% of residents will choose to stay where they train. So, again, we're really hopeful that this will be a great pipeline, not just for the Lakeland Regional Health Physician Group, but for the Watson Clinic and for other practices in our community. And then, sort of the fifth benefit, I'll talk a little bit about on the last slide, which is the local economic impact. As we're getting near the end, I did want to just take a moment and share some of the great accolades that our team has accomplished this past year, which I'm just so proud of. The first is that we were among just 24 hospitals in the country that was recognized by health grades for our early COVID care protocols. Again, thinking back to the early part of 2020, there was so much that was unknown at that time, and I'm really proud of the work that our team did to achieve that designation. We continue to get great rewards and recognition in our maternity service line. You can see that we were named a top-performing maternity care hospital by U.S. News and World Report this past year. One of the new services that we've launched, that we've already received accreditation and great quality outcomes for, is our bariatric surgery and metabolic medicine program, so that is something that we're really proud to be able to offer here locally, because there has been a lot of demand from patients for that service. I talked a little bit about technology. We're very proud to have been named one of the most-wired hospitals for the eighth year in a row, and we're Level VIII recognition, which really puts us among the top 10 or so hospitals in the state of Florida for our use and adoption of technology, and then how we use that technology to improve the care that we provide. And then, lastly, again, knowing where we are right now, I was just thrilled when we learned that we were named by Forbes as one of the best-in-state employers this past year, which, again, just speaks to the great work of our team and the support that we do along the way. And then, I mentioned economic impact, so again, the GME program will really just accelerate some of these numbers and statistics that you see, but as it relates to the current work that we do at Lakeland Regional, you know, we feel blessed not only to be the primary healthcare provider for this community, but also through the work that we do, knowing that we do have significant economic impact from not only the dollars that flow through, but also the jobs that we support, either directly for Lakeland Regional Health employees or for those contractors and others that work alongside us to help us fulfill our mission of providing exceptional healthcare to this community. So, again, I thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on the work that we've been doing at Lakeland Regional, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
First of all, my, the comment I want to make is, as you go through the buzzsaw of those slides, there are so many abilities and skills that we have provided by LRH in our community, and there's so much great work being done on a quality basis that it's easy to miss it, because you go from one set of accolades to another set of accolades, but that's a tremendous amount of work in the last decade to be able to have created this kind of a scenario, so it's, and you're a quick speaker, so she compressed a lot of information into that, into that, that really, there's, on any one of those slides, you could pause and say what a rich blessing it is to be able to have the services of LRH in our community. Secondly, I was wondering if you could just take a second to talk about the difference between Level II trauma and Level III NICU, just what that means and those delineations?
Sure, and of course, because everything in healthcare is complicated, like the rankings are, you know, inverse for the various ones that you have, but essentially, for Level III NICU, it really means that we're able to care for the smallest babies in our community, and that's important, because previously, before the pavilion opened, we were Level II NICU, which still allowed us to have tremendous capabilities, but for the smallest of babies, they may have required a transfer out of the area, so going to Tampa or Orlando, obviously, for a lot of expectant moms, if they knew they were high-risk, they might have chosen to deliver elsewhere, but we did have some unfortunate stories where the delivery might have happened here. If you had a baby that was born or twins that were born, one might have been able to stay, one may have needed to go elsewhere, so for us, it's really to be able to have that continuity of care and to be able to keep families together at a time that's obviously very important to do so. So, we're really proud of the work that we did to be able to bring this Level III NICU online, yes. And then, for trauma, again, being one of the only trauma centers, you know, in the area, Level I is the highest designation. Again, some of that speaks to your capabilities in the pediatric space, which we're working towards right now, but really, you know, our volume and acuity level, you know, we really are able to care for any sort of traumatic injury that might occur out in our community, and I can say that over the past several years, we've just continued to see the volume and the number of trauma cases coming through our door grow. And again, to your earlier point, our trauma team's absolutely amazing, and we're just blessed to have those individuals that choose to practice here at Lakeland Regional Health.
Thank you. Commission music.
Yeah, I just personally just want to say thank you, Danielle. My wife spent 20 years delivering babies there at Lakeland Regional, and so those statistics ring true when she would come home and tell me how many kids. But now, she's a professor of nursing, so she's utilizing it from the education standpoint. So, not only is the GME important, but the fact that you guys are having the local students come and work and do their stuff there, so I just, I appreciate the growth, and it's impressive, and I have a son that's going through the nursing program right now, so we're hopeful that he will stick around and grow, so thank you for that update.
Wonderful, yep, no, I hope he does, too, obviously, given the environment we find ourselves in right now, those relationships with the local schools are critical for us, and we're so appreciative of all the work that we do with Southeastern and the other schools in the area to allow us to continue to grow those programs and foster those relationships, so that hopefully, all those students do want to stay here locally.
Commission read.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Glad to see you here. I'm real pleased to see that you're expanding throughout Lakeland, obviously, with the expansion of Lakeland and our citizens, this critical time from when you have an event till we get the hospital is critical, and so, again, I'm pleased. One question, do we have a, and you may, I'm just maybe, you just don't know what's going on, but do we have a helicopter facility that we land at for Lakeland Regional?
We do, yes. So, for patients that are either, you know, coming in to us, we have transfers both going in and out, given the level of capabilities that we provide. So, it's on the top floor of the C Wing, which is essentially right above the emergency department, emergency department's on the ground floor, the very top of that building is a helipad, so patients that need to come and go have elevator access.
What general area would people come to if they had, if they had an event? Would it be just in Polk County?
No, so Hardy Highlands, you know, we will have patients coming to us from a variety of areas, given the level of service we provide and the location of our trauma center in the vicinity.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other comments by commissioners? I come from Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Danielle. It's just really remarkable to agree with what the mayor was talking about, just, you know, several years ago, right before the pandemic, hearing about the certificate of need being removed and thinking about the consequences, and just to see that you must have had the foresight, you and your board, to predict that that would be coming and not to just say, oh, my gosh, what happens in that, and be prepared to move nimbly and quickly to put yourself in a competitive advantage, you know, for the competition before they build. So, I mean, just tremendous, in spite of also, you know, going through a global pandemic, to see the behavioral health is a reality, and to see the children's, you know, wing is a reality in times that probably would have stifled and even put some businesses out of business, and you have, you know, moved forward with remarkable focus and speed, which is just, you know, you and your board deserve so much credit for that, and our, of course, our community in our county is the beneficiary of that good work. You know, with that being said, and going into the future, you know, even the city of Lakeland, we have a lot of discussions about recruitment and retention of talent, and so, you know, I just am curious, and you can imagine why people select where they want to go for residency, which I think is strategic to get them even before they, you know, potentially have children and consider the educational, you know, things, some of the things that have been a challenge here for Polk County to recruit executives and high talent. Do you see, what do you see as a trend, you know, knowing that you have foresight and that you're at the helm here at a time where you have positioned yourself so well against some of the threats? How have you also positioned yourself, and how could we partner with that for recruiting talent to our area? When we do get those residents, I see that they might fall in love with the city, but how are you doing with regard to recruiting strategic doctors for specialties that we need? Is that still as difficult as it has been? Are you, what are you seeing as trends in that regard?
Sure, no, great question, and thank you for the feedback and comments as well. I have to say, I've been encouraged, you know, I've been here for almost 10 years now, and I have definitely seen an improvement in interest in wanting to relocate to central Florida. So, I do think we're well-positioned geographically, and I do think just because of all of the investments that, again, we've been fortunate to make with the support of our board, and I think just the improvements in overall way of life in the city through the work that you all are supporting as well, I do think Lakeland has definitely gotten on the map, and I think, you know, sometimes people may not be familiar with it, but I think, you know, you can kind of see it in their eyes when they come on site and tour our facilities, and then when they're out in the community and seeing all that it has to offer. It definitely seems that that makes a significant impact, and I have to say, we've had a significant increase in the number of candidate interest that we've had, and I think we've been able to be more selective to make sure that those that do have an interest in us seem to be a good fit so that they can support the great work that we're doing here. But I feel, I feel very positive as we look to the future, I think it's just making sure that we can, you know, continue to accommodate and support their needs and what they may be looking for as our community continues to grow.
And one of the high-skill, high-wage members that LRH is a part of for LEDC, they're working on a whole collaboration suite that will help expand people's awareness in terms of what's available in the community and education for your kids and amenities and all those kinds of things, because we have to do internally a better job of telling our story, because left alone, if you just go to the internet, you might parse into one area and not into another, so that'll be an availability, and we're thankful for LRH's commitment to LEDC in that regard.
Absolutely, no, I think it's a great example of a partnership and relationship, and how can we work together to make sure that we're, you know, selling all that the community has to offer and addressing if there are, you know, opportunities or needs to work on together.
Commissioner McCrally.
And just to wrap up, so the GME Graduate Medical Education Program is something that has been ongoing probably since 2010 or before and in partnership with USF, so the fact that it's coming in next summer, it's like we have a date.
Yeah.
That's so exciting, even before I was on commission. It's just, it's something that's been an arduous pathway for us here in Lakeland, and we know that for the general public to understand why that's such a critical component to any size hospital is volume drives quality, so the more doctors you have, the more people you're able to serve, the higher our quality will continue to grow. And I think Lakeland Regional already has a high quality of healthcare, but this is, for everyone across the board, for all accessibilities, this just will create even more volume so that we can provide more services to people and help them stay home in Polk County or in the Heartland and not have to get on I-4 and go to TGH to see one of their loved ones or to St. Joe's to see a NICU baby who was born into their family or back to New Moore's and do the same thing. So, it's one of those really critical components, and it's really important, I think, for the general public to understand that this is a service for everyone. Being a nonprofit hospital, you accept and take everyone into your ER, into your programs and everything there that can provide the best healthcare service available. And so, for me, knowing and being a part of this since probably 2010, at least in the discussions of the Graduate Medical Education Program, it is such a coup for our city and for our county to have this come in here, and we it is such a coup for our city and for our county to have this come in here. And we need more primary care physicians. So as our metropolitan statistical area, Lakeland Winter Haven, we are at a deficit of primary care, and we're at a deficit of dentists. And those two things, if you can break it down for the public at large to really understand why that's so critical, it's just what Danielle says, and she and I both speak pretty fast. But one of the critical components is if you're not getting regular healthcare and preventative healthcare, then you're going to end up in the ER. And then that not only is more traumatic for the individual and the family that surrounds the individual, it also increases cost. So the more healthy we can be as a community, and I feel like Lakeland Regional is just a, just a leader in that and has been since doing community health assessments, you know, 10, 12 years ago, and really looking at what's going on in our environment. So thank you to your staff, because I know it's a team effort, and we always appreciate you coming in and talking about this.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I think that's right on. I think the more that we can get individuals established in primary care, particularly if you have a chronic condition, we're going to be able to take much better care of you on a consistent basis than just those, you know, ER visits, which are more episodic and don't allow us to get the full picture. So thank you for your support along the way.
Any other commissioner comments? Thank you. Oh, wait, excuse me.
I'd just like to say thank you for the presentation and the great work that you all are doing.
Thank you, and congratulations to you.
Thank you. All right. We appreciate that very, very much. We are now going to go to our beautification awards, and Bill Cohen is going to make that presentation this morning. Are you beginning with residential or commercial?
I believe generally the residential comes up first, yes.
All right.
Well, there it is. It's a historical house in the Dixieland Historic District. Beautiful architecture, as you can see. Perfect example of Florida landscaping, like they've taken all the grass out and planted beautiful sun-topped bromidiads, ground covers, all sorts of beautiful plants. And this is really a great job, and it's definitely Florida-friendly. The award goes to Sonny G. Harrison, 957 South Tennessee Avenue. And I believe they called, they, I don't think they're going to be able to be here today. Is anyone here to receive this award?
They're selling their lawn mower right now, probably.
What's that?
[laughing]
Yeah. They sure don't have to mow, do they?
No, no, they don't.
It's really a great job, really, what they recommend to do. So can't do any better than that.
Very, very nice. Yes, sir.
Next is the commercial beautification award. This goes to the Coney Funeral Home, located at 647 West Memorial Boulevard. I remember inspecting this two or three years ago. It's a relatively new facility, and everything meets the code, is perfectly maintained, still looks great today. So they did a great job on this. And it's also, most of the flower color is crepe myrtles. So it's just perfectly maintained, professional job. So, great job.
Sanji, come on up.
He's going to come up here. Congratulations.
We are so grateful, because Memorial, this is such a great addition. So comments from you.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. I'm Sanji Coney. I'm just so honored and so blessed to live in this beautiful city of Lakeland under the leadership now of our Mayor Muttz. I've working on next year, 37 years of servant leadership, servant servitude here in this community, and I can't think of a better community to be in. I'm grateful for just being blessed and being able to bless others, because that's what we're here on this earth to do. Let the church say amen.
Unbelievably, we have no proclamations today. And so we now move to committee reports and related items, and we'll begin with a report from the Assistant Chairman, Commissioner McCarty, for municipal boards and committees on 11-4.
Thank you, Mayor. The Municipal Boards Committee met in the City Commission Conference Room. Commissioners Stephanie Madden, Chair and Mayor Bill Muttz, and Commissioners Sarah McCarty, members were present. Commissioners Chad McLeod and Sam Simmons were present, along with staff and the media. Commissioner McCarty called the meeting to order at 9:26 a.m. The purpose of the meeting is to receive and act upon the following recommendations. Civil Service Board, excuse me, recommendation from Human Resources and Civil Service Director Mark Flaherty to appoint Cappy Walker to a three-year term beginning December 5, 2022, and ending December 4, 2025. Mayor Bill Muttz moved to approve the appointment. Commissioner Stephanie Madden seconded, and the motion carried unanimously. For information-only purposes, the Lakeland City Commission revised the 2022 committee assignments, and those were presented. The 2022 Civil Service Board election and the 2022 General Employee Pension Board election are underway. The city is accepting applications for the following upcoming vacancies. Interested residents may apply at our website. Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, we are looking for two members, one who is an employer within the jurisdiction and one engaged in the residential home industry. The Community Redevelopment Area Advisory Board, looking for three members, two who own property or a business or works in the Dixieland CRA district, and one in the Midtown CRA district. The Zoning Board of Adjustment and Appeal, looking for one member, and the General Employee Pension Board, looking for one member. The committee adjourned at 9:29 a.m.
And I thank you so much for sitting in that role, Commissioner Madden, and Commissioner McCarty, and I were all coming from the groundbreaking for, or the, not groundbreaking, the grand opening of the Florida Children's Museum, and it made it difficult to get through traffic. So our chairman allowed Commissioner McCarty to assist in that vein. Is there a motion to approve?
To approve.
Second.
A motion to approve and second by Commissioner Music. All those in favor, or any discussion on the motion? Any discussion by the audience on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. That brings us to the approval of minutes, which would be for the consent agenda, and that would include item 6C1, which is also, or 6C5, which is also asterisk as well.
Move for approval.
Second.
There's a motion to approve and a second. Discussion by commissioners and discussion or questions by the audience. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, also unanimously passes. Now, we cease to meet as a commission, and we begin meeting as an equalization board to hear the lots and clearing report from our city manager, or from our city attorney, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city charter requires that the city commission convene as an equalization board prior to imposing a special assessment lien against private property. All, all the assessments that are being scrolled across the screen there are result from the city hiring a contractor to go out and mow or clean, clear debris off of private property. And the city will then impose a lien against that property for the, the cost of the services. This is the opportunity, if you've received a notice relating to this, to address the city commission and object to that or ask any questions that you might have.
Is there a motion to approve this?
Second.
There's a motion to approve and a second. Discussion by commissioners. Are there, is there anyone present who objects to any of these items that would like to make a statement? Are there any other questions from the audience on this? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. We cease meeting as an equalization board, reconvene as a commission, and we go to 3B, I'm 3C1, miscellaneous from our city attorney.
Thank you. Again, the city has received a notification from the Department of Justice relating to the 2022 local allocations for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. And as in previous years, we've received an award. This year, it is, is an amount of $31,089. And the police department, as in previous years, is proposing to use that money to partially fund a public information officer position within LPD for the next, for the upcoming fiscal year. One of the conditions of this grant is that the city commission hold a public hearing and allow the public to input, provide input on the use of those grant funds. So we would need to open this up for any public comment relating to this.
All right. So is there any comments from commissioners? Any comments from the public on this? It's a notification only. Any questions at all? All right. We go to for
And we are asking this authorization to, to apply the grant funds as recommended for the public information position.
So you want an approval on this?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion by commissioners? Any discussion or questions by the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. Now, we cease meeting as a commission, and we convene as a community redevelopment agency, the CRA, and take item 4A.
Thank you. And our new CRA manager, Valerie, Valerie Farrell, is going to make a presentation relating to this request for tax increment financing.
Welcome, Valerie.
Good morning. For your consideration, we do have a tax increment financing agreement with Lake Wire Apartments LLC for improvements to property located north of West Peachtree Street, south of West Magnolia Street, west of New York Avenue, and east of North Virginia Avenue. This tax increment financing agreement will be for a multifamily residential project with structured parking. It consists of seven parcels totaling about 1.6 acres of land. And as you can see from the site map, if you could go to the next, I'm sorry, the first slide, sorry. This is north of Lake Wire. So not to be confused with the previous project you saw earlier this summer, this is a different project that will include two different structures. One will be for the apartments totaling about 84 units, and another structure with about 102 parking spaces. It's estimated to be completed in fall 2024. And if you could go to the next slide, it's about four stories with closed corridors. It's set to be at market rate with some luxury components. And the developers' hard costs are projected to be about $18 million with additional $1.8 million in soft costs. They did spend about $1.2 million in land acquisition with a total of development costs estimated about $21.1 million. The renderings show that they're going to be doing some additional features within each of the units. They're ranging between one to two bedrooms, about 860 square feet. The tax increment financing program, just to give a recap for the public, is to give a reimbursement based on increment, incremental revenue, excuse me, collected due to increases in the property's taxable value resulting from the investment made in the real estate. The standard term that has been offered is a reimbursement over five years, beginning in the year following the project's receipt of a certificate of occupancy, with the developer receiving a reimbursement of 50% of that tax increment. However, the CRA advisory board considered a hybrid TIF agreement, which will give this developer a receipt of 75% reimbursement for years one through five. The TIF payments under the advisory board's hybrid approach are estimated to total $633,929 over the five-year period. The staff has recommended that the city commission, acting as the CRA advisory board, excuse me, CRA board, approve the attached tax increment financing agreement with Lake Wire Apartments, which has been prepared in accordance with the CRA advisory board's recommendation. And we will stand for any questions. I would like to announce that Mr. Greg Wilkerson is here as representative, as owner, excuse me. And if there are any questions for I or Mr. Wilkerson, we are here to assist.
First of all, is there a motion to approve?
So, move.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Mann. And just for clarity purposes, when we look at the, and using the colors on the chart, when we look at the blue chart, which is typically what we do for, in the CRA for TIF, the reason that we do that is we want to give back to the investor a reward for the investment they're made allowing that tax increment funding to occur, and then get the benefit to the remainder of that area for future projects. When you see the request for 10 years, which was an aggressive request, you can see the differential between those two numbers is pretty significant. I like the fact that the, the city has, or the CRA has come back with a recommendation in purple because it rewards the disproportionate amount of investment this investor is making at the $18 million in the parking garage that's being included. So what's one of the reasons, in my mind, it is very, very well warranted. Commissioner McLeod, who represents us on the CRA, is at a meeting out of town for work this today, but he did indicate on Friday in our agenda study that the purple was a strong recommendation of the committee, and that that seemed to be a prudent appreciation of the investment being made. Comments by the commissioners?
Thank you. Palmer, how long have we been doing TIF?
Probably at least 20 years.
20 years? Well, it's just, historically, we would just do it mostly for subsidized, but when we had to, we would have low-income housing or subsidized housing, was that when it started?
I think it's mostly been focused in the downtown area. I think the very first one that I recall is the Heritage Plaza. That might have been our very first one.
Heritage was your first area.
Yeah, but it's been going on a long time now.
In Midtown to clean up Memorial, to try and make investments there.
I'm just wondering, of course, Snigga and I, this is a beautiful rendering. I guess, is this going to be a binding rendering? Is this what they're going to, is this a plan they're going to actually use? It'll look like this facility?
Yes. So they've already submitted their plans through the development review team, and they've already begun their permitting and site plan review. So it's submitted with this.
Is the parking going to be underneath or going to a separate building?
It's a separate building. So the site plan here shows the apartment building will be facing the south towards the lake, and the parking structure will be to the north.
Good. But again, I'm, again, as our mayor said, I'm glad you squeezed it a little bit to, and again, I'm not in favor of going beyond five years. And of course, with the parking garage, I think they're going to need a little bit more subsidy than otherwise. And I think that will improve their probability of getting higher rates as well for security, as well as keeping out the rain and other flood elements that we have on a consistent basis. But thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Music.
Yeah, I just, I mean, having driven by this a couple of times prior to this, I think it's a great redevelopment project, which is, which is good. You know, a parcel that's been, you know, sitting so, so poorly maintained for all those years, and to be able to do this, I think, is a, is a great project. I do, I do appreciate the middle ground. As the mayor said, you know, I would always tend to, to want to lean a little bit on the lower, like Commissioner Reed, but I think when you consider the amount of investment that they're putting, I do think that it's, that it is reasonable. So.
Any other comments? Any comments from the public or questions? All right. This is a voice vote as a CRA committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same, unanimously passes. Thank you very much. That causes us to reconvene as a commission, leaving the CRA board, and brings us to the city manager provide a report. And do you have any verbiage as well, sir?
I do. And I have two items for presentation this morning and then a verbal at the end.
All right.
The first item that I have for presentation is regarding a recommendation for a task authorization with Goodwin Mills K Wood, which is formerly Florida Disaster Consulting LLC for disaster consulting services. This task authorization is for disaster consulting services in response to Hurricane Ian. It is recommended that it be in a not-to-exceed amount of $450,000. In April of 2021, the city entered into an agreement with Florida Disaster Consulting for those consulting services, and it includes a scope of services to be provided. FEMA has designated Polk County as eligible for individual and public assistance based on initial damage assessments and the city's prior experience and recovery costs that were related to Hurricane Irma. And the not-to-exceed amount that was stated of $450,000 is proposed. Funding of these direct administrative costs are eligible for reimbursement through FEMA. It's recommended that the city commission approve the task authorization to Goodwin Mills K Wood as presented.
Move to approve.
Second.
And a motion to approve and a second. All right. Discussion by commissioners. Yes, Commissioner Reed.
How are we doing on the collection of debris?
That is moving along rather well. We still have maintained the 16 haulers plus our city staff that has been making those first passes. I know that some of the neighborhoods around Lake Hollingsworth that I had some interaction with over the weekend and some requests about when their debris would be collected. The last neighborhood was, we had, the contractors had people in those locations over the weekend, and so we're moving along very well with our first pass-through, which of course will, will be the majority of the collection. Now, we will continue to make other passes once completed, and we anticipate, as I previously stated, that it will probably be mid-December by the time we've made those multiple passes.
Mike, do we, do you have any idea how much we've spent so far?
No, I can, I could look it up to, to see. It's nowhere near what it was for, for Irma by any, any magnitude. It's nowhere near what it was for Irma by any magnitude. We spent five, over $5 million on Irma just in debris collection, and we got all but 250,000 of that back from either the feds or the state through FEMA, but I don't, I don't have this one. A week ago, we had a report from Solid Waste. They had collected 74,000 cubic yards of debris with an estimated 120 sitting on the ground, and that was a week ago. So to see manager's point, it's coming along pretty, pretty good.
Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Music.
So, well, two things. One, I live off of that Lake Hollingsworth area, and they were there all weekend picking up and making that first pass, so they did, they did a great job. When, how does it work? So we, we have this amount that we get approved from FEMA, and that's all paid in the rears, right? So we get done at the end, then we apply. How long does that typically take us to, to get a check? And I know we've talked about this in the past of it being such an arduous.
Well, actually, what we found out just on a, on a call last, late last week, was that Governor DeSantis implemented, reestablished a new program that was not available during Irma, which allows municipalities to apply for expedited monies. And so, in fact, I talked to Deirdre before walking up here today, and she's got a call with, with, with our consultant and with FEMA to make sure that we're populating those properly, and so we'll be able to submit actuals plus expedited estimates within a short period of time, so.
Does that go from the federal government to the state, and we're applying to the state, or are we applying to the federal?
Depends on which portion you're getting. Yeah, because there's, you know, the, the feds may give 90%, and, and, and the state may give five, and we, and we contribute five and so forth, but even there, their timeframes change. So, but, but it's, they've given us, the municipalities avenues to start getting reimbursed much quicker now than what happened with, with Irma, exponentially quicker, so.
Excellent.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor, if I may, as always, our very responsive staff is listening to the meeting this morning, and I just got an update that we anticipate that our complete first pass of the entire community will be completed by November 14th.
Wonderful. Next week. Okay, any other questions or comments from the commission? Any from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. Item B.
Next item is regarding a recommendation for the approval of a successor collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local 4173. This agreement will apply respectively to our Lakeland Fire Department firefighters, driver engineers, and lieutenants. The proposed amendments represent the conclusion of the negotiation process resulting in the successor agreement that was recently ratified by the Lakeland IAFF membership. Some of the terms that are important to cover for the public and the commission is that this will be a three-year agreement. Included in the three-year agreement, there are various different amendments and modifications, and I will, again, cover some of the highlights of that. One of those being that tuition reimbursement will be increased to $2,500 per fiscal year. That is consistent with the recent increase that we applied to our general employees throughout the city. Also, the annual floating holiday that each employee receives will be increasing from 12 hours to 24 hours for those positions covered by this agreement, and that would be to provide them with a floating holiday that represents a full shift, similar to the general employees who get an eight-hour full shift floating holiday. The, they, the, the, those that are covered from the fire department under this agreement may roll a maximum of 48 hours of deferred holiday to an educational leave bank, and that's to be used for their, for each employees at the fire department for their educational purposes. There are also modifications that are related to a Kelly Day. I discussed that on Friday. We've had opportunities to discuss that with the commission. A Kelly Day is a very common practice now at most fire agencies across the country in the state of Florida and certainly within our region, and so the contract provides for the implementation of a 12-hour, three-week Kelly Day that will occur on or prior to September 30th, 2023, and then that will be graduating to a 24-hour, three-week Kelly Day on or prior to October 1, 2024. There are other related modifications of cop time accumulation and carryover as a part of those provisions. There are modifications to pay and benefits, and, and those are certainly the highlights of this agreement, and, and, and some of that information includes that in year one, which is fiscal year 2023, our firefighters will receive a 10% market adjustment increase to their pay. Our driver engineers will receive a 7% market increase adjustment to their pay, and the lieutenants will receive a 7.5% market increase adjustment to their pay. In addition, in that first year, a 2.5% merit is available to all eligible members that meet the required criteria, that meet the criteria for that. Also, there are some steps in each of those classifications that are going to be eliminated and modified from our current pay plan system. Also, in that first year, the fire department will hire and train 12 additional firefighters during fiscal year 2023, and that is for the implementation of the three-week, 12-hour Kelly Day that was discussed. In year two of the contract, there is an agreement where those covered by this contract will receive a 1.5% across-the-board adjustment, and they will be eligible for a 2.5% merit increase for those who are eligible. We will hire an additional 12 firefighters during fiscal year 2024, and that is for the implementation and the graduation of the three-week Kelly Day from then 12 hours to 24 hours. As it was discussed on Friday, when we look at the number of hours that those covered by this agreement work compared to other agencies, our firefighters presently work many more hours, and so the Kelly Day will adjust that. That is very important for us to be able to retain the staff that we have and to recruit staff when needed. There is a third year of this agreement, and in that third year, there's a provision on pay for the, those covered under this agreement to receive a me-too. That means that whatever the commission may provide to the general employees in that year, the firefighters, lieutenants, and driver engineers would accept the, the same thing. There's also some, some adjustments to the health benefits. We provide the LifeScan services, and that cost has slightly increased to $456 per year per member. It is recommended that the city commission approve the proposed successor collective bargaining agreement and authorize the appropriate city officials to execute the associated document between the city of Lakeland and the International Association of Firefighters Local 4173. There is no appropriation requested or required for this action. All amounts are currently in the fiscal year 2023 budget. Mr. Mayor, that completes my presentation. However, following commission action, I would like to make a few other statements.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
In a second. And this would be retroactive to October 1st, right, as we go forward? All right, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. And again, Sean, I want to thank you. I think you did a great job in getting this all done. I've had several firefighters that I know have, have come up to me and spoke to me and highly recommended we endorse this, which I intend to. I think it's good for the city, and it's good for our citizens, and good for the firefighters too, and keep our staff, and we can get, get us a couple of little buildings built as well. Thank you.
Here. And I think this three-year agreement is also typical of what we need to be doing to make sure that we're integrating these kinds of things going forward in our agreements. Yes, Commissioner Music.
I just want to echo that, but I mean, I have an important question. What is a Kelly Day? Why is it called a Kelly Day? I hate, I hate hearing things, and I, and I don't know exactly what it is. I've heard it forever. Does anybody have a?
Go ahead, yeah. We'll have our chief give us the full.
There's a Mr. Kelly somewhere that gets all those things, or Mrs. Kelly. I just.
Okay, for the record, Doug Riley, Fire Chief, and that's a good question. So Kelly Day goes back way, way, way back in the history of the fire service, and it was a firefighter or a chief officer with the name Kelly that came up with this concept. And basically, to kind of simplify it, firefighters that work 24 on and 48 off end up working 2,912 hours a year, whereas the 40-hour guy like me works 2,080 hours a year, so they're working very, a lot more hours, almost 900 more hours. And so the concept was to do this Kelly Day, which they call it because, you know, Mr. Kelly came up with it, but after working so many consecutive 24-hour shifts, you know, with the days off, after so many consecutive shifts, then they would have a day off to lower that number of hours, and that's what the Kelly Day is. And there's, we see that throughout the nation, throughout the state, and there's some different varieties of that, but the goal standard has become a three-week Kelly Day, and that's what we have to do to compete, and that's, you know, what we came to the table with.
Okay, that's awesome. I just don't like shaking my head thinking I know something when I didn't, so I appreciate that.
Well, and that's, and that's market on that. It's earned time off incremental opportunity for pay. Any other questions are coming? Any by the audience? This is a significant accomplishment. We really do, oh, yes, sir. Would you like to make your comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Shannon Turberville, representing the Lakeland Professional Firefighters. I'd like to thank Mike Brosart and his team for all the hard work to get a three-year agreement done. It was my first time being involved in this process, and I'm absolutely positive I walked away with a lot more gray hair. Probably the biggest highlights in this new agreement is this thing called a Kelly Day that you've heard about. It's funny that we had no idea from day one that we would be, even be considering that as an option. The truth is, we kept finding ourselves boxed in and not being able to attract and retain firefighters without it. The demand for service alone makes our current schedule unsustainable. We're certainly not the first in Polk County to implement this type of firefighter work schedule. Both Bartow and Winter Haven have had this, and most if not all of our larger departments around us have that, like the chief alluded to. For the tenured firefighters here in the city of Lakeland, we had a lot of educating to do, and I feel there were some concessions made on their part for the best interests of our fire department. The compensatory time off employed, enjoyed by others in the city will be phased out in our contract. The result will be a more structured, if you will, work schedule. And as you can imagine, that definitely triggered comments and questions on, on our side, but I'm proud to say that my colleagues kept an open ear and were willing to accept this thing called change. And what you don't, if you don't know, in the fire service, it's like moving a mountain. So with that, thank you all for being supportive of firefighters.
Mr. Turberville, thank you for your report. Appreciate it very much. Commissioner Music, I think, has a question.
Yeah, no, well, actually, I don't, well, maybe I do. I don't know. When I, when I look at this agreement, right, and it says, you know, fire driver engineers, lieutenants, who's, who is in our fire department that is not in the envelope of the union?
The collective bargaining agreement only covers the firefighters, the driver engineers, and the lieutenants.
So who is, who is in our department that's outside of that? Like, that would be who?
Battalion chiefs, captains.
Okay.
And then assistant chiefs, chiefs.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? And again, any from the audience, it's a final round. This is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. Thank you. Great work all. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to reiterate those exact comments. Mike Brosart was assigned to be the lead from representing the city manager's office on these negotiations, and he was assisted by the assistant chiefs and Chief Riley. There was staff from the HR department that were involved as well. The negotiations went extremely well. I do want to recognize Mr. Turberville for his leadership of our collective bargaining members. To get to a three-year contract, as was stated from others, is very important. It, it takes a lot of time and a, and a lot of financial investment to work on these contracts, and historically, these collective bargaining contracts have been for three-year terms. And so to have everybody now be able to go back to work and not have to meet as much as they do around the negotiation table is very critical. So we're very pleased of the, of the membership and the men and women at the fire department for agreeing to this three-year contract. Equally important was their decision to accept the me-too in the third year. We all know we're in some uncertain economic times, we're in some uncertainty with our budget. Much of that was, was highlighted and discussed during our most recent, recent budget approval, so in exchange for those guarantees in year one and year two, to accept a me-too in year three is, is tremendous. And so Shannon, thank you, and, and thank all of those that you represent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And that reduces the angst. It reduces all the meetings. It reduces all the things and allows us to focus on what we want to do, which is serve our citizens. So great work all. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to four A. Oh, you had another one. I apologize. Yes, sir, you said.
I would like to make my verbal, and I would like to go to the podium for that.
I don't think there's any secret that when I come to the podium again, that usually means that there is an announcement coming, and there is certainly one today. I am pleased to announce the selection of our next police chief. This promotion, however, to be clear, will not become effective until December 1st, following the retirement of our current police chief, Ruben Garcia. Announcing this promotion in advance will allow for a transitional period of almost four weeks, and this transitional period of time was requested by Chief Garcia. Again, to be clear, Chief Garcia will continue to have the full authority of the police chief until his retirement. This selection follows a process that spanned for many months. Consideration was given to whether filling the chief's position should include an external search. However, after many meetings with members of staff and the public, high confidence in our internal candidates became extremely obvious. After posting the position internally, two of our existing assistant chiefs of police applied, Hans Lehman and Sammy Taylor, Jr. Assistant Chief Lehman holds two master's degrees, various other credentials and accomplishments, and has over 26 years of experience. Assistant Chief Taylor holds a master's degree, various other credentials and accomplishments, and has over 33 years of experience. Both men have exceptional technical skill, they maintain high moral and ethical standards, and their character is unquestionable. Each of them have been vetted thoroughly. I personally conducted a review of their respective personnel files and met with them on multiple occasions, both formally and informally, to interview each of them for the police chief position. Additionally, I consulted with our three assistant chiefs, including Chief Pacheco, and our five police captains, both individually and collectively. In addition to consulting with various community stakeholders, I convened a 10-person panel for three separate meetings to interview each candidate and provide their evaluations. The panel consisted of five city staff members, including a representative from our collective bargaining unit, the Fraternal Order of Police, or FOP, a representative from our police citizens advisory board, a representative from our Concerned Citizens Coalition, a representative from the Lakeland Downtown Development Authority, a representative from our Neighborhood Association Coalition, and a representative from the NAACP. That's what comprised the 10-person panel. Following what I believe to be an extensive and an exhaustive process, and considering all of the feedback from the many stakeholders I consulted with, our community is extremely fortunate that we have had two equally qualified and well-respected candidates to become our next police chief. This decision has been a difficult one. Quite frankly, it's been the most difficult decision of my professional career as a city manager, and that's because each of them, again, are so equally qualified, though they each possess their own unique leadership styles. each possess their own unique leadership styles. Relying heavily on tenure and past examples of demonstrating extreme calm and professionalism during very difficult situations for our police department, and also, as importantly, for our community, I am pleased to announce that Sammy Taylor, Jr. is, has been selected as our next Lakeland Chief of Police. Sammy, if you would join me at the podium, please. Sammy Taylor, Jr. was hired by the Lakeland Police Department in February of 1989 and was promoted to sergeant in 1997, where he supervised officers in the Uniformed Patrol Division and the Criminal Investigations Division. Sammy was promoted to lieutenant in December 2002 and served as a lieutenant in the Uniform Patrol Division, 911 Emergency Communications, and the Criminal Investigations Division. In 2015, Sammy was promoted to captain, overseeing the Special Operations Division, before transferring to supervise the Investigative Services Division. In 2009, Sammy was promoted to the rank of assistant chief. As assistant chief, he has provided direction for the Special Services Bureau, including SWAT, K-9 Unit, School Resource Officers, Traffic, DUI Enforcement, Red Light Cameras, Crime Prevention, 911 Communications, Planning and Research, and Recruiting and Training. Sammy presently manages the Criminal Investigations Bureau. During his career, Assistant Chief Taylor has been selected for leadership positions or served as representative on multi-jurisdictional task forces, including the FBI, FDLE, and the State Attorney's Office. Assistant Chief Taylor's graduated from Polk Community College in 1981 with an associate's degree, and from the University of South Florida in December of 1993 with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He received his Master's of Public Administration with a concentration in national security from Troy State University in December of 2002. Assistant Chief Taylor completed the Certified Public Manager course for Florida State University in 2009. He is a 2011 graduate of the Southern Police Institute at the University of Louisville and is a graduate of the Police Executive Research Forum's Senior Management Institute for Police at Boston University. As you can see, Sammy is well-educated and experienced. He is a public servant first and foremost. He leads with a servant's heart, and he is a strong team builder. Please join me again in congratulating Lakeland's next police chief, Chief Sammy Taylor, Jr. Sammy has asked to make a few comments.
Thank you, Sean. I'm incredibly humbled and honored by this opportunity. I've had an opportunity to speak with Chief Garcia. He's in the woods in Illinois, but I was able to get a signal out and speak with him. He reached out to me, and I, I'm confident in saying that he feels the same way. It's not about Ruben, it's not about Sammy, it's about these men and women in the back of the room. It's about the men and women over at the Lakeland Police Department. They come to work every day, they do their job every day to ensure that the, the community is safe and the citizens of Lakeland feel comfortable, and they feel comfortable building apartment complexes here, right? And that's because of the men and women, the hard work that they do. It's about the SRO standing in the, in the schoolhouse doors, right? It's about the Powell officers mentoring the kids as they come and go every day. It's about the folks emptying the trash over there. So it's very important to me that we, we continue to, to push the community policing and, and, and count that as a touchstone of what we do. You know, the commitment to excellence, the transparent accountability, all those things are very, are very important. Also think it's important to acknowledge the support this commission has always provided. This commission, I've been here 34 years, and the commissioners prior to that, along with the city manager, have always been very responsible and very supportive of their police department, and it is their police department. We've never asked for one thing that, we haven't been told, no, you can't do that, or no, we're not going to provide that. So thank you for your support, and we still need it and continue that. And lastly, I'd like to make a comment about the community. The community has always been very supportive and will continue to be very supportive. We love the community, and they love us, and it's hardly a day goes by that we don't get a phone call or get a post in a restaurant, and they, you know, nothing but offer to buy us a meal or, you know, shake our hand and tell us, say, we appreciate what you guys are doing. So, and it's not that way. I'm telling you, it's not that way in the rest of the world, but it is here in Lakeland, and we're going to continue to move that forward. So thank you again. I look forward to, to making sure that we continue what Ruben has started. He set the bar pretty high, but I think we're up to the challenge. So thank you. Thank you.
And no more verbals, right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners, for that time.
Thank you very much. Thank you for, by the way, your preparation of that information, because that was very thoughtfully and, and I, it represents a difficult decision, which we understand. We're grateful for the entire team. All right, bringing us to 5A1, first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two ordinances for first reading this morning. These will be read by title only, and they will come back for a second reading, public hearing, and consideration of adoption on November 21st. The ordinances are, the first one is proposed ordinance number 22-0500, an ordinance relating to local government conference of planning, making findings, provided for small-scale amendment number LUS 22-006 to a certain portion of the future land use map of the Lakeland Conference of Plan Our Community 2030, changing the future land use designation on approximately 2.63 acres located at 1,005 East Memorial Boulevard from public buildings, grounds, and institutional uses, PI, to community activity center, CAC, provided for severability, provided an effective date. Next is proposed ordinance number 22-051, an ordinance relating to zoning, making findings, providing for a change in zoning from O2 limited impact office to C4 community center commercial on approximately 2.63 acres located at 1,005 East Memorial Boulevard, providing conditions, finding conformity with the conference of plan, provided for severability, provided an effective date. Again, these will come back for a, a public hearing, a public comment, and consideration of adoption on November 21st.
Excellent, so no action required. That brings us to resolutions.
One resolution for action this morning, that is proposed resolution number 22-051, a resolution relating to assessments determining the necessity for having cleaned and cleared certain properties in the city of Lakeland, provided for the assessment of liens against such property for expenses incurred in the cleaning and clearing thereof, provided an effective date.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, and discussion by commissioners, and a discussion by the audience. This is a roll call vote, so we'll start with Commissioner Simmons, you say?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yep.
Unanimously passes. Thank you so much. And on our roll calls, we flip left to right as well, just so that the next time I start at the other end. So that's the way that works. When you're on the end, it matters more.
Yeah, that's right. You're a good boy.
And so I, I want to make sure I mention that. Okay, item C1.
C1 is for information only. That is the quarterly legal fee report from my office as to amounts expended on outside legal fees at attorneys, and that is disperated for your information and any questions you might have.
Are there any questions with respect to that by the commission? Any by the audience at all? All right, next?
Next is a proposed purchase agreement with impact technology for the provision of odor control technology for the city's sanitary sewer collection system. We've been using this technology since 2004 to try to minimize odors before they actually get to the, to the treatment plant. This proposal is for an additional three years with three one-year renewal options. The price for the first year is $32,500 per month. For subsequent years, it would be a 3% escalation, escalation in the amount of the price. First year is budgeted in Water Utilities FY23 budget, and then subsequent years would be subject to an annual appropriation by the city commission during budget time. We do have individuals here, if you have any questions about that technology, how it works.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
And a second. And we had a little bit of a discussion on this on Friday. Any other questions by the commission? Any from the audience? This is a roll call vote, so all those in favor.
Just voice.
I'm sorry. I meant, you know, I'm.
You said vote, yeah.
It's voice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, unanimously passes.
Next is a proposed task authorization with Commagan Ruivitz for construction services related to the Southwest wastewater pump station flow reversal project. This project would provide the ability to transfer flow from the existing 24-inch Southwest sewer, sewer force main to the new 20 and 30-inch English Oaks force mains. This gives us more capacity. It also gives Water Utilities flexibility to perform maintenance without having to shut down any mains or provide expensive diversion. We received three responses in exchange to a invitation to bid, and the low bidder was Commagan Ruivitz out of Tampa at $260,641. They were evaluated by the city staff as well as Chastain Skilman, who is the city's engineer of record for this project, and were determined to be both the lowest bidder and, and responsive and responsible in relation to that bid as well. They will begin their work as soon as possible, and it is slated to be completed in the summer of 2023. Again, the total cost of the project is $260,641, and that is included in Water Utilities FY23 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, and a second. Discussion by commissioners. Any discussion or questions by the audience? This also is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, unanimously passes again.
Next is a proposed contract for preliminary design build services with Garni Companies for the Western Trunk Gravity Sewer Replacement Project. This is the project that the city commission has slated, a significant amount of, of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds to finance. What this will do, this particular contract is simply for the initial route study as part of the design build process. They will, they will analyze the different branches that this, this line could potentially take, survey existing manholes, conduct hydraulic modeling, perform subsurface utility investigations, and other things to determine the best route for this project. We had two respondents for this work, and Garni out of Winter Garden was selected as the company deemed most qualified to perform this work. The amount of the initial phase, this initial contract, will be $781,683. That has been budgeted in Water Utilities FY23 budget, which includes the $17.8 million of, of the ARPA funds, and not all of that will obviously be used for this first project. That will be for the, for the entire project, and that is recommended for your approval. We have individuals from Water Utilities if you have any questions.
Motion to approve.
Move for approval.
Second.
And a second. Extremely important. Any discussion by commissioners or questions? Commission music.
Yeah, I was thankful to be able to be asked to participate in that RFP and go through that, and, and I'll tell you, it's, it's amazing the amount of work that our department goes to. We know this because you guys talk about it all the time, but, but having been inside of it and read the documents from, from both companies and go and be able to, to work on that was an education for me that I, that I certainly appreciated. So this project not only is, is, is going to be much needed, but just massive, you know, and the uncertainty and the why it's done in stages and whatnot. But anyway, I, I just wanted to say a thank you for the team for allowing me to come in and help on that.
Good. We had wanted on Friday to get your input, so appreciate you.
Yes, sorry about that, yeah.
Yeah, that's all right. And by the way, how'd you do at the meet?
They did well. They did better than, than we were ranked, so that was good.
Okay.
Weather was great in Tallahassee, so it was, it was good.
Great. So in this regard, some of what happens isn't always even determinable until you get there. So you might want to maybe make a comment on that? Does somebody like to do that?
I think Robbie.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Robbie.
Okay, Robbie, you're up.
Robbie Caness, engineering manager. Yeah, so this is a big project for us. I was glad to have Commissioner Music on the, the team to review that and, and kind of learn that process. I did want to add just a little bit that I didn't mention on Friday. We didn't talk about schedule too much. We'll get started on this Phase 1 right away, expect in about March to wrap up this route study and launch into Phase 2. We'll bring that back to the commission for the, for the full engineering price. I would guess right now in the five to seven million dollar range for that engineering. That engineering will last until probably the end of the year, about December 2023 is what they're showing in their preliminary schedule right now. That's when we'll bring back the GMP and, you know, know all the specific details and look for approvals.
And just practically, why, how, why is this difficult and how, why does it take time?
It's the, it's the urban route that we're going through. We don't know what's underground. So much growth has occurred, and so many utilities are in the ground, even drainage canals, all that takes time to, to engineer. What you want to find is the, probably, I guess I'd say, the least cost effort. We're trying to determine that in really just in about 12 weeks, and we're setting the direction then. We're, we're making decisions without spending too much money, without doing a completely exhaustive search to try and launch to get it done in time, and after that, you, you pay what it is.
And our goal is to have this all complete by 2026.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Any other questions from the commission? Any other comments from you, Robbie? All right, any questions from the audience or comments? This is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, unanimously passes. Thank you very much for your work on this. That brings us then to utility, and we are looking at items 8, C1, 2, and 3.
Good morning. Ramona Siriani for the City Attorney's Office. The first item that we have is a task authorization with Teamwork Net. This is for assessment of wood utility poles. The Public Service Commission requires electric utilities to be on an eight-year inspection cycle for utilities to conduct inspections of their wood utility poles. The city currently contracts with OSMOS to do the actual inspections of those 58,000 wood utility poles that Lakeland Electric has. Out of those inspections, typically about 1,000 of those are tagged and determined to be, not be, not be able to be treated or restored. There was a significant discussion on Friday with the utility committee with regard to not having the in-house engineering staff for Lakeland Electric to be able to do that, which is why this task authorization is necessary with Teamwork Net. They will provide engineering staff to actually assess and create the work orders necessary to look at these 1,100 Lakeland Electric wood utility poles. They are also going to be establishing quality assurance and quality control standards to ensure the efficiency and the replacement process as well, and provide Lakeland Electric with long-term data collection support as well. The anticipated time to conduct this assessment be under just about a 50-week period or approximately one year time. One of the other issues that came up with regard to the discussion on this task authorization was the fact that, you know, the price, the total price is $236,480. While that's included in Lakeland Electric's FY2023 budget, I did want to point out that is a not-to-exceed amount. And again, this is, this task authorization is being issued pursuant to a continuing contract that the, the city has already negotiated with negotiated terms and rates. So this is basically a task authorization that's based on actual time and materials, so it could be less than the $236,480. Again, it's, it's to, they can reduce, Lakeland Electric can reduce the staff necessary as we deal with some of the, the staff shortages that we talked about with our, with regard to our engineering group, and we would ask for your favorable approval. It did receive favorable approval by the utility committee on Friday.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
And a second? All right, and a second, and discussion with, by commissioners. Any discussion or questions from the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, unanimously passes.
The next item that we have is an agreement with Plant and Power. This is for Larson Unit 8's outage contractor services. This is for boiler maintenance and repair services to replace the evaporator piping and economize our tube sections, as well as the inspections related to, to. This unit 8 is currently in its fall outage. The purchasing department. The purchasing department, for the work necessary, issued an invitation to bid back in August. We received two bids, Plant &amp; Power being the lowest price bid, and then Midstate Industrial Maintenance was the other bidder with a significantly higher price. And I'd point out, the difference in that pricing that we discussed on Friday as well had to do with the mobilization costs that were associated with Midstate. Part of that total $247,833 bid price, $148,000 of that was mobilization costs, and that is because the way Midstate looked at the specifications, that included a full-time project manager, quality assurance, quality control, repair, and safety personnel, which they included in that mobilization cost, which is why you see a significant cost differential and why they came in so much higher, whereas Plant &amp; Power, their mobilization cost ranged from $30,000 to $37,000, so significantly less. So in turn, Plant &amp; Power was deemed the lowest price and responsive, responsible bidder for the work. They will, pursuant to the agreement, they'll provide the material, equipment, and labor to perform the work. The total cost of the work is $132,652, and that is included in Lakeland Electric's FY23 budget. And it did receive favorable approval from the Utility Committee.
Motion to approve in a second from Commissioner McCrally. Discussion by Commissioners? Commissioner Madden?
Just a question, Ramona. So when you talk about, you know, you went in a little deeper to find out what the disparity was in the costs, and you find out that they're having a, you know, a supervisor, so you concluded that we don't need that supervisor in this job?
I think staff, the way the specifications were prepared, that was not necessary to have that full-time support that they actually included in their bid, and that was a determination that staff made.
Okay. And so when you find things like that, are you, is that anything you would ever go back to the two bidders? Is that a miscommunication with regard to how they read the bid? Or is that just their process for how they do it, and they always do it that way, so they wouldn't want to do it any other way?
I believe staff did go back and talk to Midstate about that. I would have to, yeah, they did have discussion about that prior to selection process. So Midstate was aware of why they were not selected, and they did discuss that.
Okay.
Okay, good question. Commissioner Reed?
When you do that, did they have a chance, did they have a chance to redo their bid? Or they live with what they put in?
No, because that would be contrary, because obviously, they had both submitted bids. They were sealed bids, and at that point, that would almost be getting a second bite at the apple, unless there was some other clarification that staff had to make to issue an addendum, or if there was some other clarification required, that would have changed the scope of the work or something like that. But once those bids were open and looked at, it would have probably been very unfair to allow Midstate to come back and modify their bid.
And there is a process, legal process, if someone puts in a bid and feels they were unfairly treated, they?
They could file a bid.
Right, but all the clarifications need to happen before the bids are open, because at that point, everybody knows what everybody else bid, so that really compromises the process.
Right.
And when the notice of intent award goes out, they typically have five days, and that, when we bring an agreement to you for approval, that has already taken place, so.
Good sensitivities and good questions. Any others? Any from the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. And that brings us to the audience portion. Thank you very much.
One more.
You have three? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
The last utility item that we have is an agreement with Optimus Industries LLC. This is to furnish a replacement rotor air cooler for Macintosh Unit 5. The two-pressure heat exchanger, which uses low-pressure and intermediate-pressure water from Unit 5, heat recovery steam generator to cool the compressor discharge air, is in need of replacement. This is original equipment manufactured by Optimus. It's been in place for over 20 years, and it's now reached the end of its useful life and in need of replacement. The city's purchasing department approved Optimus as the original equipment manufacturer of the rotor air cooler, and upon approval by the City Commission, Optimus will begin engineering and fabrication of the rotor air cooler. This has a long lead time. Delivery is anticipated not to occur until December 2023, and then the installation will occur in spring of 2024. The initial bid price that Optimus quoted was $1,061,707. However, staff is requesting a contingency amount of 5%, which equates to $53,085. That was added to the initial price for a total cost of $1,114,792. That's included in Lakeland Electric's FY23 budget. And I just wanted to add a point of clarification. I know we had some discussion on this item as well on Friday. Mr. English, on our Utility Committee, raised an issue about a 25% possible price increase. However, I just want to clarify, and I don't think I did a good job of explaining that on Friday, that 25% increase, that's only if the parties had not reached an agreement on the way that provision is, because that's what we were requesting the contingency for. We don't anticipate until a signed agreement, we don't anticipate that 25% increase. We are asking for a 5% increase. And what I tried to say is if it were to go above that 5%, then obviously, we'd have to come back to you, but I don't know if Mr. English, I think, thought that that could occur anytime once the contract is signed, anytime during the term of the agreement. And that is not how the provision in the contract reads. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, and I would agree with you. I think that's the way we left that meeting after the fact, so that's great. Any other comments by, questions by the Commission?
I'll move to approve.
Oh, and first of all, approval?
Second.
Right, same today. And the second, right. Discussion by Commissioners. Discussion by the audience. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Excellent. Unanimously passes. Thank you, Ramona. That brings us to item 9, which is the audience portion of the meeting. So any audience member that has something they'd like to discuss can come up to the podium, just identify yourself, and have at it.
Terry Coney, and I'm wearing a different hat today, and you get a double dose of Coney's this morning. First of all, congratulations to Commissioner Simmons. And I'd like to just remind, I think you've all received invitations, but I'm wearing my hat as a member of the Polk County Veterans Council. And this Saturday, there's a Veterans Day ceremony at Veterans Park, and not only is a Veterans Day ceremony, but we'll be unveiling the Friends of Freedom monument. And it doesn't only represent the Spanish-American War, but it also represents Lakeland history. So just want to get it on the record, and for anybody that's watching, and look forward to seeing you all Saturday morning. Thank you.
And it's a beautiful monument.
It is stunning.
Any other comments from any audience members? All right, that brings us to the Commission. Any Commissioner comments? We'll start with you, Mr. Commissioner Reed.
Oh, good, I get to start, okay.
Setting a pattern.
Get out and vote tomorrow. Critical day tomorrow, and I don't know, I haven't been watching, I haven't been watching TV lately, but I hear we may have a storm coming tomorrow or the next couple of days. I don't know if it's developed into a hurricane yet, but we expect a lot of rain, so be prepared for that. Get your raincoat out if you're going to go to the polls and stuff like that, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Madden?
Well, I kind of commented on Friday, but I'll just still give a shout out to our traffic operations team and to ADA team and any other of the City of Lakeland team that was at the Safe Streets Symposium last, was it Friday, Thursday? We have had so many things happening in the city of Lakeland. I mean, I almost don't know what day it is, because you can just tell that everyone's back, everyone's having their fundraisers and their events, and so many buildings have been erected during COVID that are having their grand openings and groundbreakings. It's just really exciting times in Lakeland, so I've just enjoyed so many things, too many probably to focus on, but that was just really great to be, it's, you know, always sad to hear that we're the ninth worst for pedestrian and bike fatalities in the state, and that our state's the worst in the country. So certainly, we have room for improvement, and I'm always happy when our city manager says he's riding his bike around to check out the routes, and, you know, I rode my bike again today, and just, you know, I think it's incumbent upon all of us, you know, city leaders, to rethink how we live, work, and play, and especially in our urban downtown core, think about how we can become as pedestrian and bike-friendly as possible, celebrating our micro-transit with the squeeze. A lot of folks came from out of the area, and just sitting in a golf cart, you know, kind of closer proximity to the ground and being open air, it just makes you think, huh, well, that was really nice little ride across the bridge to downtown, and that took like, you know, three minutes. So we went from RP Funding Center over to the joinery and to the traffic ops, and you just see how close, geographically close it is. And if you were in any other city, you would easily have walked that far to get to your favorite restaurant or to the store that you wanted, where you wanted to shop. So it was a great meeting, and I just encourage all of us, whenever possible, I know our communications team does a great job of just kind of highlighting, you know, was in Amsterdam this spring, and you're like, it's like the Tour de France every day, you know? Bikes are everywhere, and pedestrians are everywhere, and we can walk, and we can bike in Florida, even if it's hot, we can do it, and we can be more cognizant when we're in our cars, you know, of pedestrians and of folks on the bike, so we can all improve those numbers and not be number nine in the state.
Excellent. Commissioner McCrally? Commissioner Music?
Yeah, I just want to thank the team, both on the, not only the fire contract, but the selection of a new chief, and, you know, anybody that has paid attention globally, nationally, or even in our own town, there's been time for, we've had issues. But now the fact that you say that the most difficult decision you've had so far is to select between two of our fabulous assistants is just, it's great. I mean, it's such a testament to both themselves personally and what they've done to put themselves in the position, but I just, I think that that's just great.
Excellent. Excellent comment. Dr. Simmons?
Just briefly, it's been a real momentous event for me, sitting my first time on the City Commission, and so as I sat here and listened to the various issues and voted, I became more settled, and I think I've become more settled as we move forward, and I thank Commissioner Music for helping me to navigate through the agenda on the computer. We had some issues early on with the technology, but we're getting that straight, too, so just wanted to say that.
Thank you. And Mr. Broser?
I'd like to answer Commissioner Reed's question about how much we've spent to date on the debris pickup. As of Friday, the estimate is about one, slightly less than $1.6 million is what we've spent to date from the consultants and haulers or whatever.
Can I ask Michael a question? We take it out, and we grind it up and put it way out there past Glendale?
It's at Glendale.
Do we sell that? We burn it? What do we do with that? Does this sit there and decay?
You want to pick it up?
Well, some people make moch out of it. I don't know how much we mowed it up.
We use a lot of it for ourselves. Yeah, we do use a lot of it on our own, and we can provide, we can get you that information.
Yeah, I just.
A lot of that we utilize.
I didn't know if we sold it or not.
Yes, please. A random member of the Communication Department.
Kevin Cook, Director of Communications for the City of Lakeland, and I just know this because we're out there notifying the public of what's going on with the debris pickup. We, the haulers that we hired have a giant grinder, and they grind it, and it's part of their fee that they haul it out, and I spoke to one of the gentlemen that was there, and I guess there's a contingency from the Nashville area, and they're doing a lot of national building as part of these contract haulers, and it's their responsibility to haul it, but my understanding is, based on my conversation with the leader out there, they're using it at some of their other construction sites.
Interesting. Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us then to our last item on the agenda, item 10A, which is the City Attorney and City Manager Compensation. We talked about this a little bit on Friday. Is there a motion that a Commissioner would like to make?
So move?
To do?
Well, we did talk, we discussed.
A 5% across the board and a 2.5% merit.
Right, yes.
Second.
And that would be retro to October 1st. Yes, okay. And a second. Discussion by Commissioners. Any discussion by members of the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same. Unanimously passes, and thank you for the work that that represents.
Thank you.
And the support thereof. All right. Any other items that anyone else would like to bring up? If not, we are adjourned.